Yeah.
We're gonna call this meeting to order. Will y'all please stand for the invocation and pledge, please? Mr. Munoz, will you lead us in invocation, please?
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the rain. Dear Lord, please guide us in our decision making and please give us the right state of mind. In your name we pray. Amen.
The flag of the United States of America, two big brother for which it stands, one nation in the land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The flag of the state of Mexico, the zeus symbol, perfect friendships among united nations.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Second.
And a motion is second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Second item on the agenda is county manager report. Ms. Kirk.
Okay, so I just thought I'd give you an update of all the things that I've been doing. I've been creating and preparing the agendas and the packets for each of the meetings as of May. I've done five of those, prepared preliminary budgets, but by June first, conducted meetings with TKM regarding the uploading of the preliminary budget, completing budget adjustments for fourth quarter, assisted in processing payroll for three regular payrolls, one special payroll revolving, resolving various issues with Mary's support, of course. Processed payments to ensure timely bill payments, worked with Mikhail to organize invoices, met with the commission regarding finance officers resignation in early May, updating the job description, posting the vacancy, reviewing applications and conducting those interviews. As far as projects, EOC construction project with White Sands Construction, the project is ahead of schedule. The storefront doors and kitchen cabinets are installed, paint and texture is completed. The data line installation is scheduled for next week. Exterior exterior stucco is complete, roof repaired by insurance is complete. The parking lot had some damage done to the trash bin that they had brought in, and so that'll be repaired within the next week. Estimated completion for the EOC is mid-July. When it comes to the fairgrounds and arenas, I've responded to commission questions regarding the stall rentals, RV hookups, arena preparation. On the pavilion project, I've met with Bob with NCA Architects on June 4th for site inspection. We've addressed concerns about the construction quality, actually had a meeting this morning. He's gonna get us a list that we're all in agreement on and that should take care of that project. Also initiated the project with NCA regarding the update to the jury room with district court, the jury room and restrooms. And discussed with him, looking at the, moving forward on the project of the courthouse doors. And that's been with Carla's help and update, as that project was actually initiated in 2021. I've also been working with Administrator Ramsey on the MAP program. We've had to adjust the job description and revise the original budget that was submitted in early May because it's, we've been approved for 250,000, it's $100,000 less than the original grant. So we've been meeting and participating in Zoom calls with the state just to prevent any additional postponement. They were wanting to post a holdoff on awarding us that money, but we've got that taken care of and we'll be able to continue like we have. We've been approved on that. Working through the school resource officer invoicing. As after a conversation with Sheriff Sanchez, it's been discovered that we have not invoiced Portella Schools yet. So I've been going through the stack for the entire year and working through that invoicing process where I have to verify the wages, the hours, the benefits for the hours that the resource officer has spent at the school so I can bill them accordingly. And Sheriff Sanchez has also met with the school where they will be billing. We will be invoicing only quarterly as they have a set amount, so we won't have to go through this detailed process in the future. I've also visited with Johnny over his relocation of, from the Bonham to the courthouse basement or the enterprise center. However, we've decided to put that on hold until he's had an opportunity to maybe visit with the new county manager to see if that's still the direction they want to go. He has also offered his assistance to the volunteer fire departments for any of their paperwork. When we were discussing having, that they were needing some help with that, he said he'd be more than happy to help with them with anything that they need. And I've also held various meetings with Peter Kelton, just trying to work through the Sundale Road Use Agreement and other additional projects. There's a couple of others coming down the pipe that I understand, so we're just waiting to, till we get a contract with them before things, we can have further discussion. Also met with Hugh Frank verifying, to verify the EMS, arch EMS carryover amount, and we've got the letter from them stating that they are going to allow them to carry over the amount that they've requested. So with that, those are the things that I've been doing here lately. That's all I have.
Thank you. That was awesome. Anybody have anything?
Under you.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
So how long have we been without, you're saying Portella Schools has never been invoiced for the RSO?
We didn't, I didn't realize the contract on that, that needed to be invoiced through a conversation that Sheriff Sanchez and I had the other day. It's been a couple of weeks now and realized that he, he was gonna ask me about it and I started looking into it and realized we hadn't done it. I hadn't even seen the paperwork until recently in how they were even doing that. I'd reached out to the school as well to ask them about the invoicing process. Sarah had shared with me some documents that were, geez, even from when I was with them, so from 2018, but they have invoiced them, I want to say April and May and June of last year, but I'm doing all the invoicing now from July to current, so I'm gonna do one full year's worth of invoicing. But trying to work through that process along with the other duties I've got.
I wanted to clarify one more thing. So you had mentioned before that you had those two alcohol things, but then you, did you discover that they were not something that needed to come before the commission because they were gonna consume, not sell, correct?
So I did reach out to them. They are not consuming alcohol at all at the location. They were gonna have a dance and they did reach out about having officers there for the dance that they will be having, but they will not be consuming alcohol at the location after we've had some clarification.
Okay, on both of those?
On both of those.
Perfect, thank you. Anything else, anybody? Okay, moving on. Item three. Commission may take action on any item listed under new business. A discussion and consideration of fairgrounds. You went out there today. Do you want to talk something about anything that you did out there? Okay.
Commissioners, I was, me and Annette, as she mentioned, had a meeting today at 11 o'clock with Bruce Nixon, the contractor, Bob, the new architect, and then
With NCA and Dave.
Dave, anyway. Going over, and Gary was there, but we was going over the new construction that they've had, there's some issues out there, some unfinished issues. And I think we got those resolved. The new architect is gonna hold Nixon Construction to it, to the new, what they need to be done. And there's several things that's gotta be redone out there. And some of them haven't even been done, so they've got to do it. And we're talking about like the eaves on the porches and stuff, the eaves on that tin and stuff, it's got to be redone. There's some closures. Not closures, but some, all living up underneath there. The cover up particle board on the roofing and edging right there on that front porch. Inside of the bathrooms. Talking about we need to put some, some kind of framework across those, around the mirrors in there. Keep little kids from cutting themselves and old adults, whatever, because they're just up there on the walls themselves, just hanging up there with nothing around them. Nothing but shark beds all the way around. The, the walls, bathroom has got that pulched marble up there against them. And instead of finishing putting a rounded edge up on top, they just went in there and silicone them, caulk them, and anyway, and on the corners, whatever, just caulked and silicone it, anyway, they're gonna have to go back in there and put that edging on the corners and up on top, up there, the rounded edging up on top of there. There was some, another issue in, I guess it's in the bathroom, the girls' bathroom, one stall. There was a edging that was damaged. Supposed to be new, it was damaged. It was up there, supposed to take care of that. There's some painting issues that they went in there and just put one coat on that sheet rock. And it's, it needs another coat of paint.
Go on there and see them.
Should have been primed.
Right, yeah. You know, they, so they're gonna have to another coat of paint put on. But anyway, we, and we, we sat down, we had a good adult, you know, visit with the architect and Bruce, and I think it went well, it was positive. And I think we, he's gonna take care of the issues and concerns and it'll be all right. And I think everything's gonna be all right. And Ms. Kirk, if you want to add anything to that?
No, he's gonna send us out, so Bob says he's gonna send a list out to us and, and Bruce of the, the items that we've agreed that need to be taken care of, so we should have that at the beginning of next week.
So, you know, that's, that's one part of the fairgrounds and I was out there, I looked at the arena. Out there, Juan did a really good job of plowing the arena. I guess yesterday morning. We plowed that, did a really good job with our new plow, it looked really nice. Cam was out there and I think we come to conclusion, it, it does look nice and hoping the ground's gonna be good for the little, for the event going on this weekend out there. Like I say, that's been a concern and we're trying to do the best we can of get, keeping that arena, get that arena built up. That way we can keep having these people come to our county, to our towns here and have these events come in here. And so we walked around and looked at concerns of the plugins, camper plugins, and water situation out there. She's talking about these bigger events coming in that we might need to put in, the electricity's there, I think. And I think, you know, we might in the future consider about maybe putting in some more hookups right down through there, maybe a little bit, you know, and we might even move our water situation out where those, you know, if they need some, you know, water hookups, they could have that too. But, but there's, I think we can do a little bit to accommodate these bigger events that might be multiple day events. And there's a little eagerness there to hold these things and that's what that building is for. And I think we need to capitalize off of it, that the people are willing to come in here and do that. I think the county would really benefit, not just, not just the county itself. I'm talking about Roosevelt County in general, as far as the vendors, our food vendors, our DC sales, CNS, and without a fuel cell, they will be buying fuel, they will be buying something to eat while they're here. And I think if we can capitalize off these people, you know, we ought to do the best we can about making where we, we can capitalize off of. But, but other than that, things look good out there. I guess the new, all the new roofs look good. That's been replaced. They did a really good job with those, I thought. So I was happy about that. You know, and Gary was telling me this morning that on the new building, on that new arena, that new porch, he, they did put a rain gutter on, one, I guess on north side of that awning where that water, when it did rain, it was just running right over that big electrical box right there. And how it never passed, you know, how it never passed permit, something like that, I'll never know. That water was just draining right through that little box all the, all these years.
Crazy.
Crazy. And so we, you know, Gary, they did fix that probably, they put a rain gutter there, rain gutter on there and, and forced that water go down beside, you know, to the side instead, right on top of. So anyway, it's I think things are looking better. Slowly, surely.
One, y'all have any?
I agree 100% with what you said about utilizing the fairgrounds. We need to, we need a fee schedule for the stalls, the arenas, whole usage of everything, we're gonna charge out there something. And I know we had it online at one point. I don't know if it's still there or not. Ms. Kirk, do you know if it's still there?
Yes, it's available online. It's on the maintenance. If you go to the maintenance, that's where you can find the contract to rent. It was updated and approved at the beginning of this year.
And is our webpage back up and running now?
Most everything has been up and running on our webpage except for the commission site. But you can still access the agendas, minutes, everything can be accessed except for y'all's page. I have reached out with Focal Shift, and we have revamped our PO and contract with them where we're doing an adendum so they can take care of that. Try to get it ADA compliant and get it user friendly and work on a few other issues. So the money that we already had allocated to them, I've revamped that with them so they can start fixing these issues. So it'll be a lot more available and updated. It hasn't been updated, so.
Ms. Knight, do you have anything to add for the Little Wranglers Board?
We had a very good turnout. Thank you to all you guys. The ground was outstanding. We didn't have a single horse slip or fall, which is unheard of out there. So people were very pleased. This week I've spoke with several producers from all over areas. They're very excited about getting this facility, getting back in here. That's where we talked about needing a fee schedule. You know, the arena, if they bring their own tractor and drag the arena, if the county provides tractor, drag and driver, just different fee options for them to have available. Of course stalls, RVs, things like that. But we had, we had a very successful weekend in the past. I'm hoping it'll be as good this weekend. Juan has done an outstanding job out there helping us keep that ground good. Roy Lee and I looked at it this mor, or this, this morning again with the new drag. And granted, I don't drive the tractor, but I think it looks great. I would run my horses on it, so we're pretty happy with that. It's dug up enough that their, the hardpan is down a little bit. We did talk about, like you said, some of these bigger events that come in, they usually are a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Ms. Kirk had mentioned at our first meeting that there was about 15, 17 RV spots available with water and power. Sewer's not an op, and it's not a big deal. People don't need that. Power and water is the biggest thing. But after looking at it, there was only two water hookups available that out there at, at this time. I know the power runs down that full fence. I don't know what it would take to get more 30, 50 amp outlets put down that fence and then maybe on the stall side because the power and water, like Roy Lee said, is already out there. But that would be a big attractant for these bigger events to come in and rent the whole facility for three days at a time to get that done if possible.
Thank you, Kim.
So we, we do have somebody scheduled to, to start out there, right? I mean, we're gonna hire for that. We did budget for that, so I think besides maybe getting a few weights for the front of that tractor, we're pretty good to go right now.
I don't think that would be very hard, right? To do, I was looking at that tractor that both toes were there, all we did is that bracket that holds those weights and there might be something at the road mark for that.
We used to have a bunch of weights, you know, that we would take off the, the tractors.
Yeah.
And I bet they could make a bracket or something for them.
Because I, I'm pretty sure that bracket's probably around there somewhere. Just about to get the weight on the tractor. On the front of the tractor. They need a little weight on for that tractor for that plow. It is a little, on end light, you know. It really, when you get that plow picked up and in the ground, it isn't like. Obviously, that, that tractor's 90 horses. I think there's enough horsepower to pull it. Yeah, front end system would be better, but I think we can utilize what we have for a little while. I think we can utilize that thing. And I think if they're, you know, I think if we looked hard enough, maybe over at the road department, I think that bracket that holds those weights, it might be over there because it was unbolted. You know, at one point. You know, it does, it looked like it unbolted off of there.
Ms. Kirk, I'm looking at the county's website.
Right, exactly.
What drop down is that fee schedule under, on there?
Go to maintenance, departments, maintenance.
So, yeah.
Commissioner Chris, well, the only, the only concern I have on all of that is with that being the only tractor that they're utilizing, of course, for mowing. And he's starting to, this is the season for them to start mowing as well. Doing Monday through Thursday to mow and then trying to get the tractor back over here, just putting that out there as a thought of what y'all need to do to make sure that there is some, a piece of equipment.
Yeah. You know, Tuesday morning, he mentioned that he had a mowing crew out. Well, and, and so I know
Because if you have a Friday, Saturday, Sunday events, that's all I'm want y'all to be concerned about.
I understand, I do understand. Thank you.
No, I like where Roy Lee said, you know, put the whole county to capitalize because, you know, they, they're gonna shop here. I think that's pretty good.
Well, where are you at? You got any comments? Do you have anything to say? Okay.
Get the wood.
Anybody got anything else on the discussion? Did you find what you were looking for?
No, not yet, but you can go ahead.
Okay, let's move on to discussion and consideration of Roosevelt County Manager Job Description Contract and Posting of Position.
So I've given each of you a hard copy of the job description. I had previously emailed it for us to look over. See if there were any changes that needed to be made. With that being said, I did not bring a copy of the contract because that is something we need to worry about once we get the job description done and, and worry about that.
True.
Job description and then, of course, posting would follow. When we want to get that done with Mrs. Perk leaving July 31st, that's something we need to get started so that we can get that posted.
So do you need all of our
Inputs would be good.
Today? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, but if not, we could do it by the end of next week and get that posted would be great. Get it sent back over to the lawyers and make sure that everything's done correctly.
Would y'all like to review it or would you want to do it right now and edit it? How would you like to do it? I don't either, so let's get on.
I've already reviewed, already reviewed my emails.
Okay.
I have your mail.
Okay, well then let's go. Does anybody have any changes they want to make?
I do.
Okay.
Essential functions, direct all aspects of county government overseeing all county departments, including the personnel within the sheriff's office, clerk's office, treasurer's office, and assessor's office. I would like personnel within the sheriff's office, clerk's office, treasurer's office, and assessor's office taken out of that. Feel like that's what they were elected to do. But I also think that the county manager should have the final say so in terminations of any employee of the county for liability purposes.
Okay. Right there at the top under job summary?
Essential functions, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, eight bullets down.
For those elective issues.
Obviously, the hiring.
Seven bullets down.
That part.
Direct all aspects of county government overseeing all county departments, including the personnel within the sheriff's office, clerk's office, treasurer's office, and assessor's office. And you're wanting
To strike that.
You're wanting to strike the whole bullet? Or are you wanting just, okay?
Yep, basically, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify. Anybody disagree with that? Okay, anybody got anything else they want to change?
My thoughts, I, I agree with Malin. But I think that maybe somewhere in there that we have a monthly meeting with the county manager and all of the elected officials so that they can all at least stay on the same page. You know, just have some discussions.
The department heads?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So.
Departments and electeds or just departments? Okay.
Yes.
Would y'all like to add that into that bullet point to
Well, I think what Malin is trying to show her is the oversee
Right.
All county, so.
Yeah.
But the other elected officials in departments.
Right. I was just thinking, there's, there seems to be, from what I can see, a lack of communication. Not entirely, but I think if they were able to get together once a month and at least just have discussions, nobody overseeing anyone else, but just communicating and talking, I think would be a really good idea.
What do y'all think about that, about having the manager have monthly meetings? Is that something y'all want to direct the manager to do?
I don't think it needs to be as about functions, simple function.
I don't think you can mandate it with the elected officials.
But I do like the idea.
Yeah.
You know, it would be encouraging to see it.
Right.
So communication, really, right?
Yeah, just for being transparent reasons.
And did anybody see anything else that they did not like or that they would like to add to it?
That same phrase was somewhere else in here and I'm trying to find it.
I think it's up at the top in the job summary.
It's up at the top in job summary. That's why I was asking.
Oh, okay.
It's, this includes overseeing all county departments, including
Yes.
So we'll strike it out there as well.
And that's all I had.
Those would be the same ones I left out.
There would, there might be an addition in there that says, did the county manager, and I don't know if I saw that or not when I read it, but has final say in termination, in the termination process.
Yes, it does.
Okay. If that's in there, then I'm good with that.
I'm trying to find it, though.
He can try.
Overseeing hiring, retention, appropriate, supporting employees of Roosevelt County. I think to oversee the hiring, retention, and appropriate, but that doesn't say anything about firing.
I mean, that's what they charge for, really.
Yeah.
And each elected official's gonna make their own decision on who they want to hire anyway, so.
She just oversees it as a county manager.
And they can overturn it. Even if I say, this is the person I want, they can overturn saying that person is not rehireable or that person doesn't pass a background check or a drug test or whatever. They can overturn, even if an elected official wants to hire a specific person. Or that person doesn't pass a background check or a drug test or whatever. They can overturn even if an elected official wants to hire a specific person.
There's still a set of qualifications that.
Right.
That's personnel policy, not manager.
Yeah, that's what the manager's job is, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Y'all good?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Put a self Roosevelt County Job Description as county manager.
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Item four A, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, budget adjustment for fourth quarter FY twenty-five financial report part one.
Yes. Thank you. In your hands, you have the budget adjustment for fourth quarter. You're welcome to go through it, review it. Um, we have to have this, of course, to do end of year. Uh, so that way we don't have any audit issues. All of our budgets are within line. Don't really have too much to say. I don't know what all information you're used to getting from this, but. This is what helped us put all these, all the budgets in line. Been working hard to get this done. Uh, I do request that you pass the resolution so we can move forward and, and we can finalize our fourth quarter as soon as possible.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Greider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Um, fit by contracts agreements and procurements, request for the approval of first professional services agreement for mental health resources. Inc. For DWI compliance program for the total of twelve thousand dollars for the contract year of. Seven, one of twenty-five to six, thirty of twenty-five. Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, this was a contract we just didn't get in place before the last meeting. It would have been with all the others, but um, MHR, they, they dragged their feet a little bit, so I got it the day after submitting it, so.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion and second, Commissioner Munoz?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, executive session pursuant to ten dash fifteen dash one NMSA nineteen seventy-eight H two. Attorney client privileged information pertaining to threat or pending litigation contracts and or limited personnel matters pertaining to the county manager resignation as needed. Any further action, oh. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Commissioner Greider?
Yep.
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
He stops. But don't cut Michael off.
Thank you, Cam.
Yeah, don't cut. Correct.
Yes, yes. Have we come out of executive session yet?
We're fixing to right now.
Okay, yes, but yeah.
Got a motion and second to come out of executive session pursuant to ten dash fifteen dash one NMSA nineteen seventy-eight H two. Attorney client privileged information pertaining to threat or pending litigation, contracts and or limited personnel matters pertaining to the county manager resignation. As needed. Any further action necessary as a real result of closed session? And there is action necessary. Does anybody have? Um, well, so we were um asked to. Release, um, Ms. Kirk asked to be released if we saw it fit to go ahead and release her. From her obligation on her resignation. And um. So do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. And in that motion, are we releasing her as of?
Today.
So we have a motion to release um Annette Kirk from her. Job for her, from her obligations per her resignation. Um, we will continue to pay her through July thirty-first as her resignation stated. I have um, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Got a motion and a second. Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Okay, five yeses. And we also, um. Does anybody wanna make a motion on an interim county manager?
On the what?
On the interim?
Oh.
I wanna make a motion. To.
Oh, okay.
Interim manager.
Okay, so we have a motion for Drew Patterson to be our interim county manager beginning tomorrow.
Second.
July, June fourteenth. I got a motion and a second. Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Motion was by Commissioner Greider who seconded.
I did.
Okay.
And is there anything else? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.
Yep.
He's not even on there.